I will now call to order the January 9, 2025, Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting. County Administrator Gary Schmidt, would you please do the roll call for us?
Yes, thank you Chair Roberts. First, our staff support today. County Council Jane Vedo, Clerk to the Board Andrew Jirocky. Roll call attending remotely Commissioner Fireside.
Here.
In the room Commissioner Savas.
Present.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner West.
Here.
Chair Roberts. Here. All right, I will now lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance if you please stand with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, well, good morning everyone and thank you all for coming. We're holding this meeting in person and virtually. If you've joined us via Zoom for this meeting and are interested in providing some public comment today, we will prompt you regarding how to do that and when the time is right. General public comment will be taken at the usual allotted time. Gary, would you please introduce the first agenda item for us?
Yes Chair, thank you. First is a board discussion item, selection of 2025 Board Vice Chair. The Board has a policy that at the first business meeting of each calendar year, you will select a vice chair among the four commissioners who are currently not the chair to serve in the role of vice chair when the chair of the commission is not able to attend meetings. You rotate this role among the four commissioners and you select that person at this meeting in January. The term is for 12 months or until such time as the Board wishes to make a change in the role of vice chair. Commissioner Savas is next in rotation to serve as vice chair, yet it is a decision of this Board who you'd like to have as vice chair. So today Commissioners asking for your discussion and ultimately a motion on who you would like to select as the Board's vice chair for 2025.
And Commissioner West?
As the outgoing vice chair, I'd like to make a motion and appoint Commissioner Paul Savas to the vice chair of the Board of Clackamas County Commissioners.
And I will enthusiastically say yes to that.
And Martha second said, so it has been moved by Commissioner West, seconded by Commissioner Schrader to select Commissioner Paul Savas. I did see he raised his hand there as the 2025 Vice Chair of the Board. Is there any further discussion?
Chair, just to say honored and ready and prepared to take that role, thank you and appreciate the support. And I also want to thank Commissioner West for his last 12 months of service and taking the extra time it takes to do that and we'll move forward.
All right, thank you. If there's no further discussion or comments Clerk, would you please call the poll for us?
Commissioner Fireside.
Aye.
Commissioner Savas.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Mr. Chair.
Aye, and the motion is approved 5-0 and Commissioner Savas will serve as the 2025 Vice Chair of the Board. I will now recess as the Board of County Commissioner and convene as the Housing Authority Board. Gary, excuse me, what's up?
Thank you Chair, you're now meeting as the Housing Authority of Clackamas County Board of Directors. This is to select the 2025 Board Vice Chair for the Housing Authority of Clackamas County, the same description of what I just said. It should be who you just selected as the Board Vice Chair for the Board of County Commissioners, however, it's your choice who that may be. Joining you online is Housing Resident Commissioner Anne Leenstra. Commissioner Leenstra, are you there?
Here. Good morning.
Welcome, good morning Commissioner Leenstra. So there are six of you on the Board for the Housing Authority, so it is simply my request, please Commissioners, if you would discuss and then select a vice chair for the Housing Authority Board of Commissioners for 2025.
And Commissioner West?
As once again the outgoing chair, I would like to nominate Paul Savas. So I move that Paul Savas is the 2025 Clackamas County Housing Authority Vice Chair.
Second.
And second, so it's been moved by Commissioner West, seconded by Commissioner Schrader to nominate Paul Savas as the 2025 Vice Chair of the Housing Authority. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, Clerk, would you please call the poll for us?
Commissioner Leenstra.
Aye.
Commissioner Fireside.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Savas.
Aye.
Mr. Chair.
Aye, and the motion's approved 6-0. Commissioner Savas will serve as the 2025 Vice Chair of the Housing Authority Board. I will now adjourn as a Housing Authority Board and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners. Gary, what's next?
Thank you Chair and thank you Commissioner Leenstra for joining us today. Next is the consent agenda, the consent agenda for the Board of County Commissioners. Andrew, would you please read the consent agenda?
Consent Agenda, Item 3A1. Elected Officials: Approval of Previous Business Meeting Minutes for the Board of County Commissioners. B County Council, 1. Approval of Settlement Agreement in the Case of David Buzza versus Clackamas County at All. Settlement Value is $125,000. Funding is through the County Risk Fund. No County General Funds are involved. C Disaster Management, 1. Approval of Grant Agreement with the State of Oregon for Fiscal Year 2024 Emergency Management Performance Grant. Total Grant Value is $136,121 for one year. Funding is through the Federal Emergency Management Agency, Oregon Department of Emergency Management, and matching funds of $105,957 in budgeted County General Funds. D Health, Housing and Human Services, 1. Approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement with Portland State University's Trauma-Informed Oregon for Assessment of Public Health Staff. Total Agreement Value is $35,000 for one year. Funding is through the Oregon Community Foundation and Kaiser. No County General Funds are involved. 2. Approval of an Intergovernmental Revenue Agreement with Multnomah County for Shared Afterhour Emergency Phone Response Services. Total Agreement Value is $14,315 for 18 months. Funding is through Multnomah County. No County General Funds are involved. 3. Approval of an Amendment to the Community Mental Health Addiction Treatment Recovery and Prevention and Problem Gambling Services Intergovernmental Agreement with the Oregon Health Authority for Individual Forensic Evaluations. Amendment Value is $40,000 for 6 months. Total Agreement Value is increased to $17,7,595.75 for 18 months. Funding is through the Oregon Health Authority. No County General Funds are involved. 4. Approval of a Renewal of a Healthcare Services Contract with Care Oregon Inc. for Services to Young Individuals Experiencing Symptoms Consistent with Diagnosable Psychotic Disorder. Renewal Value is $50,000 for one year. Total Agreement Value is $100,000 for 2 years. Funding is through the Oregon Health Plan. No County General Funds are involved. 5. Approval of an Amendment to a Fixed Price Revenue Subagreement with Oregon State University for Parenting Education. Amendment Value is $78,541 for 6 months. Total Agreement Value is increased to $294,392 for 4 years. Funding is through Oregon State University. No County General Funds are involved. E Transportation and Development, 1. Approval of an Amendment to an Agreement with the Freshwater Trust for the Henry Creek Culvert Fish Passage Project. Amendment Value is $50,000 for one year. Total Agreement Value is $150,000 for 2 years. Funding is through County Road Funds and In-Kind Services. No County General Funds are involved. 2. Approval of an Amendment to an Agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation for the Knights Bridge Road Malala River Bridge Project. Amendment Value is $1,021,089.58. Total Agreement Value is $4,622,175.58 for 4 years. Funding is through the Oregon Department of Transportation and $474,697.44 of County Road Funds. No County General Funds are involved. Mr. Chair, that concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you Andrew, do I have any Commissioners that wish to remove any items from the agenda or consent agenda? Hearing none, may I have a motion please?
I move Chair Roberts that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Schrader, seconded by Commissioner Savas. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Clerk, would you please call the poll for us?
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Fireside.
Aye.
Commissioner Savas.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Mr. Chair.
Aye, and the motion's approved 5-0 and thank you very much. So next up we have public communication and it's great to see we have a number of individuals here today. I want to just elaborate here just a little bit, the testimony is limited to 3 minutes and I ask that the comments be respectful and courteous to all. I did also want to point out this Board is aware of some concerns of the public regarding an investigation by law enforcement into one of our members. If your testimony is concerning this investigation, I just would remind you that at this time no charges have been filed. The matter is at an investigative stage and we must permit that process to proceed. Therefore, I would have no comment on this particular matter until the investigation's complete and just ask that they'll let the legal system run its course and let's focus on the business of Clackamas County. As a reminder, you can email submissions for public communication at bcc@clackamas.us and these will be accepted as a part of the public record. I will now open the meeting for public testimony and I will take in-person testimony first. I would ask my colleagues if we could just hold their comments until after public testimony has been given today. So Clerk, would you please moderate the in-person testimony for us?
Thank you Mr. Chair. I've received a list of participants who'd like to speak today by filling out a blue card. I will read from them in the order that I have received them. Each person will have 3 minutes to speak. First, I have a Mr. Rick Dodge from Milwaukee. Mr. Rick Dodge, if you could please come forward, you'll have 3 minutes to speak. On deck is Christine Kennedy. Rick Dodge, and then on deck after 3 minutes of Mr. Dodge is Christine Kennedy. Thank you, please go ahead Mr. Dodge.
Thank you. Commissioners, good morning.
Good morning.
Ben West, Commissioner, Tuesday, thank you for bringing up some very touchy subjects that I think we need to really take seriously. And you know, this cloud hanging over because of, I'm not going to go there because there's plenty of people that probably will today. But about a year ago, early last year, I had brought this up and I'm talking about the sanctuary status of our state. And it seemed like it went in one ear and out the other. And you brought up, thank you, an issue that is probably going on a heck of a lot more than we even know because it seems like our news sources are afraid to bring it up. And I'm talking about the illegal aliens. Now, if you ask, sorry, what alien is, it's a person belonging to another, to a foreign country or nation. And I'm going to use that because it's a terminology that's totally legit. Now, it's shown to be somewhere between 10 and 20 million people have crossed the border and we're seeing problems all over the country. People have been bused here and a lot of people don't know that, but it's true. And the amount of money and the cost to deal with the issue is one thing, but the other thing is when it comes to stabbing an 87-year-old person, and thank you for bringing that up again because everybody should know that. The cartels that were working out of Seaside in Oregon City proves that, you know, this is a homegrown situation. My wish is for the safety of my grandchildren and everybody else's grandchildren and children. With that extra protection against this protected class of people who chose to illegally come to our country, and there's a really, really good reason, obvious, many good reasons, and certainly there's a certain percentage of them that are here legitimately. And I'm not, I'm not talking about them, I'm talking about the fact that they come here because we are a sanctuary state. There's one county in Colorado that eliminated themselves, removed their sanctuary status, and there's many others across the country, I think Arkansas. Anyway, I'm not going to, yep. If we can just set a precedence, have the guts to deal with Salem because I think that was probably the problem before. And let's not be afraid of that, let's set a precedence, and I'll real quickly here. The new administration may do something about it, period, but it's probably going to take a while, but I think one life is worth doing it right now. Remove ourselves from it and set an example, period. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. And we have Christine up next, correct?
Next is Christine Kennedy of Lake Oswego. On deck is Chris Waller of Milwaukee. Chris Waller of Milwaukee, you'll be next, but first Christine Kennedy, you'll have 3 minutes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Chair Craig Roberts and Commissioners and Administrator Schmidt, thank you for a few minutes. My name is Christine Kennedy. I'm the Chair of the Democratic Party of Clackamas County Justice Committee. I've lived in Lake Oswego for 10 years and today I'm bringing to you a call to action related to possible mass deportation. This was approved by the Central Committee of the Democratic Party of Clackamas County and clearly we know that this is a big event that may be happening. We don't know what the impact is going to be. We know that we are requesting and calling for all jurisdictions and elected officials serving those jurisdictions in Clackamas County formally communicate a countywide response plan to protect the legal rights of people who may be impacted by the unfunded largest deportation effort in American history that was announced by President-elect Donald Trump. What we're asking for, what we're calling for is a couple things. The resolution goes into more detail, has links and that type of thing, but in particular in regards to the gentleman who mentioned sanctuary status, we know that there is a new law, the Oregon Sanctuary Promise, it's codified in ORS, and it spells out how county and city resources should be involved or not involved with particular issues regarding this issue in terms of immigrants that are here, regarding what status they're in and how we're going to deal with issues if, for example, federal agents show up at an elementary school or we have kids that all of a sudden we've, or we have kids that for some reason parents are no longer at the home and how are the schools going to manage that? So there is anxiety in the community about this. It's a serious issue, it's not a laughing matter. The issue that Ben, that Commissioner West brought up is a concern for all of us when there's illegal activity. So the other thing that we are asking for is basically this communication plan, what are the expectations? So we have a law, we have people that are frightened, we have other people that are angry and making assumptions, and we have people who are vulnerable. And the kids especially in the schools, especially the kids of color, are very worried about this and very concerned that they're going to be swept up in this. So we're moving forward, it's 2025, and please consider this resolution and the actions that we're calling for to protect people. Thank you.
Thank you for coming today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next I have Chris Waller of Milwaukee. Chris Waller, followed by Giovanni Shearne of Oregon City, you're on deck. First, before you go, I'd just like to remind folks that when you're testifying, if you could please get a little closer to the microphone, that helps us hear you. Thank you.
Hello, Chris Waller, Jennings Lodge. As always, when I speak before the Board, I am speaking as a private citizen. Chair Roberts and Commissioner Fireside, I'm so glad to see you at work and Commissioner Schrader, so glad to see you back. I'm sure all the citizens of our county will benefit. Chair Roberts, I'd like to ask that you consider an action that will enhance the ability of the public to communicate with the Board. Four years ago, the previous Chair changed the existing rules for public comment at the Thursday business meetings, moving it from the beginning of each meeting to the end. This made it impossible for the public to comment on most actions before the Board before they were voted on. Since most Board actions are proposed at the Tuesday meeting where public comment is not allowed, then voted on at the Thursday business meeting, members of the public can currently comment only after a vote has taken place, except for the relatively rare actions that require a public hearing. I know many people who've stated that this does not make sense, that the public should be able to weigh in on matters before the Board before they are voted on. Moving the public comment, or at least the public comment on issues that the Board will be discussing that day, to the beginning of the meeting would help ensure that the public can actively participate in our government and that you hear the voices of all your viewer constituents. I hope that you can consider making that change. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Giovanni Shearne of Oregon City. Giovanni Shearne of Oregon City, you're next. On deck is Natalie Lutmer of Happy Valley.
Good morning Commissioners. My name is Giovanni Shearne. I'm the founder of Up &amp; Over. We are the only black-owned organization exclusively providing services in Clackamas County through the Supportive Housing Services Funds. Since December 2022, we have been instrumental in housing 74 people with those SHS funds, 19 with Rapid Rehousing Funds, and 9 with Rapid Rehousing II or the EO2402 Funds. We accomplished this with 74, we accomplished the 74 being housed with the SHS funds with a skeleton crew of 6 people, 3 of which are case managers. We did a lot with a little that first year, but we proved we could do the work. Of the 74, 70% are black or brown, 76 were Population A, which means they were literally outside when they got housed, and 96 have a disability fleeing domestic violence or both. Excuse me. Of those 74, we've had 3 evicted after the 1 year and were able to rehouse 2 of those. That is a 99% retention rate, which is right in line with Clackamas County at 95, 96%. Our outreach team this fiscal year alone has provided survival supplies to 116 new people and they're often referred to when folks are talking about what a good outreach team looks like, and we only have 2 of those. So a few weeks ago, community partners received news that we should prepare to adjust our budget, decrease our budgets over the next few years. The reason for this was because SHS money, which is funded by taxpayers, was overestimated by the state. So the state tells the people they gave the money to, which is the counties, to figure it out. Then the counties have to tell the people they gave the money to, which is me, to figure it out. But what it really boils down is now, now I have to tell the people we serve to figure it out. Because when I look at my budget, the only places I can cut is my flex funding, which means I can't help people who are housed and I can't purchase survival supplies, and I mean literal survival supplies. We saw someone the other day in a t-shirt, shoes, no socks and pants, and had a garbage bag over them like a poncho just to stay, just to stay dry, not even warm. So I can't imagine that me, the person with 6 employees, the smallest of the smallest in the county providing these services, has to now figure out how to solve and fix this budget problem when it wasn't our problem to start with. We were told to go and get the most vulnerable people, we did that, and so now those people have to sacrifice in order to fix this budget issue. So this should not be their issue to sacrifice for and fix because again, when I look at my budget, I can't cut staff because there's a 1 to 25 ratio for case management and we're at capacity. I have to cut where we do the most work, in our outreach supplies, in our case management. So I have so much more to say and you will probably see me again, but I will end with this, I just am imploring the state on down to figure this out because the people we serve, they can't afford to fix this. We just can't afford to fix this. So thank you for your time and for me, I'm a believer, so I believe God's will be done, but thank you for your time.
Thank you. And if we could hold your thought, shall we get to the Commissioner? If you could just hold that for me for a second.
Stay here, I want to address your concerns. Not right now, but I want to address someone the Commissioner speaks, so I hope you will stay for comments. Thank you.
We definitely want to follow up on it. Thank you. Thanks Ben.
Next up is Natalie Lutmer of Happy Valley. On deck is Stephen Hunter of Wilsonville.
Good morning Commissioners. I'm Natalie Lutmer of Happy Valley. I am the wife of a Navy veteran. I am a mother, I am a grandmother, I am a community volunteer, and I'm also a Clackamas County employee. I work for the county because I have spent my entire life in the service of others. I've volunteered, I've fundraised, I've helped those who aren't able to help themselves, and I find that working for the county makes me feel secure that there are good people in good positions serving the taxpayers. I am a member who is covered under the, or I'm an employee who's covered under the EA Union contract, although I was not a member of the union until recently. And why I became a member of the union very recently was because on Monday, December 30th at 5:16, we received an email from benefits regarding that all EA Union members who are Kaiser members, that their Kaiser premium would jump from $88.46 to $303.20 if the union contract was not ratified by that next day. So the 30th, we had until the 31st, and this is a holiday week, to get the contract ratified or else on that Friday, which was January 3rd, that large premium was now going to be taken out of our paycheck. So we're talking to business day notice. Instantly at that point, my opinion turned on what was important with the union. I absolutely, that night, went and signed my union card and became a member of the EA Union. This was wrong. This was a wrong move and the way to get it turned back to $88 was for the contract to be ratified. The 303 is not a permanent choice, it's a choice that was made until we agree to the terms of the union contract. This is something that is not bargained for. Everything that we're bargaining for are things that are in the future. This money is coming out of the pay that we have already budgeted for, that we have depended on. This is immediately after Christmas. People were on leave, they did not know that this money came out of their paycheck until they saw what their pay was and it was short, an extremely large amount. The EA is not the managers, it's not the supervisors. These are boots-on-the-ground employees who are doing the day-to-day work, working with the community. And now instead of taking $80 a month out, you take $300 a month out with no notice, no chance to prepare, nothing, a week after Christmas? It's not right. Here at Clackamas County, there's something we follow called SPIRIT. It's an acronym. Two of those are integrity and trust. So integrity is dealing fairly with others. That is what I expect the county to do with me. Trust is having trust between the leaders and the employees. When we trust each other, we get to work with each other. If there is no trust, then how are we going to work with one another? Part of the SPIRIT acronym, it says that when we trust each other and our leaders, we're able to work through disagreements. It also means when necessary, we address wrongs and we make it right. This is a wrong. I'm looking at each and every one of you to prioritize this and make this right. There are people who work for the county that are living paycheck to paycheck. That extra $214 is part of their mortgage payment, it's their car payment, it's the food for their children. This is not a small matter to a large group of people for the county. Thank you for hearing me today.
Thank you.
Next up is Stephen Hunter. On deck is Teresa Hamilton, Teresa Hamilton of Damascus, you are on deck. Stephen Hunter, go ahead please.
Good morning Board of Commissioners. My name is Stephen Hunter. I reside in Wilsonville. My contact information is on the comment request card. I am a non-affiliated voter and volunteer with the Clackamas County Election Integrity Committee. I wish to speak on election integrity in Clackamas County. For the new members of the Board, you may not have reviewed past minutes where a resolution was presented identifying concerns about our elections. Specifically, the voter rolls, legitimacy of votes cast, and compliance with federal election laws such as the National Voter Registration Act of 1993 and the Help America Vote Act of 2002. The presentation was well-received by most members of the Board, with 1 or 2 rejecting it out of hand. The media jumped the shark publicly referring to the many citizens that believe in fair The media jumped the shark publicly, referring to the many citizens that believe in fair, open, and transparent elections in less than a favorite light. Immediately, Mayor Joe Buck of Lake Oswego, more on him in a moment, drafted a letter critical of the presentation, then signed by the mayors of Milwaukee, Wilsonville, Oregon City, and Gladstone. These signatories did little to no research on the resolution and reacted in a purely partisan manner. Joe Buck oversees the Lake Oswego Police Department. His complicity in the timing of public disclosures and facts surrounding the investigation and search warrant of one of the sitting county commissioners is suspect. Indeed, all the signatories of Mayor Buck's letter have gone silent on election integrity. I have come to the conclusion, the reason Democrats see no problem with election integrity is because Democrats have no personal integrity. This was demonstrated once again by the secret swearing-in of one of the commissioners-elect. I would like to see the text of the oath this commissioner swore to. I am guessing it said nothing about truth and honesty and upholding the constitutions of the United States and the state of Oregon. I would like to know who officiated this swearing-in and who witnessed it. If the official is the Clackamas County clerk, I request this board ask for her immediate resignation for interfering in honest and transparent county business and conspiring to commit fraud on the people of Clackamas County. No county business now can be trusted, including elections. I suggest this board revisit my comments over the past months. I and others suggested resolutions to keep us from this point. All were ignored. Now astain will be over every action this board takes. Shalom.
Teresa Hamilton of Damascus, and on deck is Mark Riecksecker. Mark Riecksecker of Oregon City, you are on deck. Teresa Hamilton, go ahead, please.
Good morning, Commissioners and Chair. I just have two questions. Commissioner Fireside, I know in our system of justice, you are innocent until proven guilty, but if you are convicted, will you step down immediately and-
We can hear you.
Go ahead.
Okay. Will you step down immediately and spare the citizens of Clackamas County the unnecessary burden of time and expense involved in collecting signatures for what would clearly be a necessary And Chair Roberts, if Commissioner Fireside is convicted and she does not step down immediately, will you demand her resignation to spare the citizens of Clackamas County the unnecessary burden of a recall? And that is it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark Rieck, Mark Riecksecker of Oregon City, and on deck is Holly Cook. Holly Cook of Oregon City, you are on deck. Mark Riecksecker, go ahead, please.
Good morning. I'm Dr. Mark Riecksecker. I live in Oregon City. What is integrity? By definition, integrity is the quality of being honest and having strong moral principles. Proverbs 28, verse 6, says, "Whoever walks in integrity walks securely, but he who makes his ways crooked will be found out." What is trust? By definition, trust is firm belief in the reliability, truth, ability, or strength of someone. Commissioner Mark Scholl was honorable, reliable, had strong moral principles, integrity, and was trusted. Clackamas County's recent vote-by-mail selection process, disguised as an election process, provided hard-working, overburdened taxpayers with a new commissioner possessing very questionable morals and ethics. I won't go into detail, but what we know is the Lake Oswego Police executed a home search warrant on October 30th, 2024, just before the vote. They were looking to find evidence for an ongoing investigation of aggravated identity theft and aggravated first-degree theft involving an elderly woman. Granted, we are presumed innocent until proven guilty, but police won't issue a search warrant without probable cause. The public was not informed of this pre-election information, and the media performed their usual great job of hiding the details and burying the facts. Had this information been available, a different result in the election may have been the result. Hence, just another day of election interference by the Democrats. What we've also learned is that this Clackamas County Commissioner was sworn, secretly sworn in behind closed doors, not open to the public. Why? Was a proper oath process even performed? Did the Commissioner pledge on a Bible to uphold the Constitution? We don't know. But people with nothing to hide would take their oath of office within full public view, unless... Now, I walk into this meeting, and I see four Commissioners sitting in front of me. Apparently, this Commissioner is still in hiding. Also reported was that the other elected Clackamas County Commissioner, former Clackamas County Sheriff, knew of the search warrant and investigation, yet chose not, or chose to keep that information quiet. Is that a virtue of integrity? My grandfather was elected Sheriff of Clackamas County in the 1940s and 50s. He was honorable, well-liked, trusted, had integrity, and all the qualities people of Clackamas County expect from their elected officials. Do we have this today? Do the new Commissioners have integrity? Do they have our trust? Because of lack of integrity, these two Clackamas County Commissioners, of these two Commissioners, we, the people, have no trust in their ability to perform their duties with the best interests of their constituents in mind. Therefore, we demand they step down now to avoid future embarrassment of a recall petition or possible criminal conviction. Have a blessed day. Thank you.
Now up is Holly Cook of Oregon City. On deck is Dan Toose of Oregon City. Dan Toose of Oregon City, you're on deck. Holly Cook, go ahead, please.
Hi, good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I didn't plan on speaking, so I do not have notes well-written out, but I do want to say, I find it a little auspicious that Commissioner Fireside did not show up to face us. I find it very uncomfortable that we're seeking answers and transparency, and we're not receiving it. I also find it very auspicious that she did have a secret swearing-in. And another thing that I would like to bring to attention is the sanctuary. I know that we have moved forward with the Navigation Center downtown, which has caused me to move my business off Main Street, costing me more rent, about $1,200 a year more, to keep my clients safe. I've had to move partway up the hill. Let me backtrack. I am a parent. I'm a resident in Oregon City and a business owner. And I find it quite alarming that we're getting the race card thrown and kids' feelings thrown out when we are a sanctuary state, sanctuary city, crime is through the roof, I'm seeing more homeless on my streets, and we're worried about hurting people's feelings over protecting law and integrity of taxpaying citizens. And I want to know what your guys' plan is to do to protect us, because at this point, I've been a lifelong Democrat until a couple of years ago, when I've seen the corruption, and I don't see any accountability. And I have never felt unsafe. I've been to Harlem, I've been to Mexico City, I've been to the worst parts of the world, and I've never felt unsafe until recently in my own town. So I just, I would love to see a plan moving forward, but unfortunately, I don't think there will be one. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Dan Toose of Oregon City. Dan Toose, I have no one on deck.
Thank you. So have the rest of the day. My name's Dan Toose. I'm a fifth-generation Oregon City resident. I am also the vice-chair of the Republican of Clackamas County. I'm also the alternate chair of Congressional District 5's Republican Party, the ORP. I started doing volunteer work in Oregon City for my grandfather, who was very well-known when I was 10. So for 50 years now, I've been volunteering and serving this community. I own and operate a wildlife refuge of eight acres near the college. I restocked the Johns Inkeeps Environmental Learning Center with Oregon Painted Turtles 30 years ago with Mr. Herman. I've seen our state go from the top five states in the nation to the bottom five, especially in education, and the taxes. And go ahead and look it up, if you don't believe me. The reason that I became heavily involved in the Republican Party is the total degradation of our state by the Democrat Party, which has been kidnapped, and we all know that. My problem is, every single day, every other state in this nation, well, not everyone, is shipping people here by Greyhound with one-way bus tickets to come here to get the free handouts and the treatment. And if you don't believe me, Mrs. Schrader, you can go down there to the Greyhound bus station, or you can just watch Kevin Dahlgren interviewing them. But it happens every day. Every day, there's two Biden buses coming up from the border that gets dropped at Walmart of immigrants coming to Oregon. I have friends that are refurbishing hotels for, there's one in Portland, strictly for Nicaraguans. I'm getting tired of working my whole life and watching my state be destroyed. And so I'm here to beg to remove sanctuary status, which is also destroying our election process. Maybe you heard of the simple 300 votes that Clackamas County said was, you know, the DMV registered wrong, which is now up to 70,000, and we know that that's not true either in our state. So I implore that you remove sanctuary status. And that isn't even the reason that I came here today, but it's one thing that upsets me. The other thing that upsets me is this whole Fireside situation. I'd love to see if that was a Bible I got sworn in on, but I doubt it. And I'm here to say that the recall will be in place in the very day that it is able to be presented. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes the list of blue cards I have for people attending the meeting in person who'd like to speak. Is there anyone else attending this meeting physically that has not yet filled out a blue card would like to speak? Seeing none, I'll now turn to those who are attending the meeting virtually. If you are attending this meeting on Zoom and you'd like to speak, I'll ask you to please raise your hand, and I'll call on you in the order that I see. Again, I'll repeat, regardless of if you advanced, registered to speak virtually today, if you would like now to speak, I'll ask you to please raise your hand, and I'll call on you in the order that I see. First, I see Tammy McGuire. Tammy McGuire, I'll allow you to speak, and you'll have three minutes.
Can you hear me? Just want to make sure.
Yes, we can hear you, but you're a little faint, so if you would mind speaking a little closer to your microphone.
Can you hear me?
Could you say a few test words for us, please?
Yes. Hello? Hello?
Yes, we can hear you now. Thank you. Go ahead, please. You have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Good morning. I'm a resident of Clackamas County, and I live in the Oak Grove unincorporated area. And I came upon this situation with my neighbor, and this is kind of a personal thing, but I do believe that this could be like an enforcement code that should be added to Clackamas County Code Enforcement. I am a specially-cut flower farmer, and I have a double lot in Oak Grove, and I grow flowers for florists, and I have a huge garden in the backyard, and right over the chain link fence with my neighbor's backyard is a swimming pool, and it is huge. And I've noticed that, and I have pictures, that my neighbor drains his swimming pool in my yard consistently. Therefore, my backyard is a swamp. I can't plant my cool flowers to grow, and he will not stop this process. So I've contacted several different people. I've contacted non-emergency. Obviously, they say it's not a police situation, so they will not help me. I called Oak Lodge Water District, who is in contact with the DEQ because the chlorinated water possibly could be contaminating my soil. My arborvitae that I just planted are dying. I contacted Clackamas County Code Enforcement. There is no code violation for this issue. So I did contact the City of Milwaukee Code Enforcement. They do have a code that this would fall under, which they would report, they would come to the neighbor's house and, right when it's happening, and talk to them about it and ask them to stop. Clackamas County will not help me, because I'm not in the city limits of Milwaukee. They can't help me either, because I'm in the unincorporated, unincorporated Oak Grove. I did submit a DEQ online complaint, which they said they're not able to help me because it's not close to a stream or a river. I did contact Clackamas County Resolution Services, which they have a waitlist right now, and this is continuing, he's continuing to dump his water on my land continuously. I have pictures, I have video. I've asked him, of course, several times to stop. This has happened at different times of the year, and he will not stop. He throws up his hands and walks away, and leaves the hose right next to my fence, draining his pool in my yard. So it's very frustrating. So I, there isn't, the City of Milwaukee Code Enforcement that addresses this issue, which would be a violation, is Title VIII, Health and Safety, Chapter 8.04, nuisances, nuisances affecting public health. It's letter G, surface drainage, drainage of liquid waste from private premises. The Code Enforcement officer said that this would count as a violation of this code, and they would go and try and stop it immediately.
Tammy, if I could just interject, if you could do us a favor and kind of wrap it up, your time is up. I want to give you a chance, but if you could kind of wrap it up for us, that'd be wonderful. Also, happy to have staff follow up with you as well.
Yep, that's all I have to say. I just want to report this and see if this could be added as a code violation for Clackamas County.
All right. Thank you very, thank you very much.
Chair staff will reach out to her after the meeting, see what we can do.
Fantastic. Thank you.
The next hand that I see raised is Michael Weber. Michael Weber, I'll allow you to speak, and you'll have three minutes.
Thank you, Reenture. First off, Michael Weber, Clackamas County, Milwaukee, Clackamas County. Congratulations to Chair Roberts, Commissioner Schrader, and Commissioner Fireside. It's good to see you on the board, and let's get to work. There's been a lot of, well, first of all, from personal experience, I have been a victim of political violence. The Democratic Party of Clackamas County's office had a brick thrown through the front plate glass window, had bullets shot from the street through the door. This resulted in thousands of dollars of damage. Thankfully, no one was hurt. Violence has no business in the political discourse. It is perhaps a concern of personal safety that Commissioner Fireside chose to have a private swearing-in ceremony and it's appearing by Zoom. I will not speak for her. I do not know, but that is conjecture. The election interference, any information provided during the election cycle would not have changed the 25% under-vote of Commissioner Fireside's race, nor the 18% under-vote of Chair Smith versus Chair Roberts's race. Chair Smith lost by 13% of the vote. No information would have affected that election. As far as what Commissioner Fireside did or did not disclose during the election cycle, that's up to her. election cycle, that's up to her. There was no collusion from the parties that were being implied with the media. There was no election interference. These are just misinformation, and this, this kind of talk should stop because it doesn't exist. On the subject of recalls, I wish you luck. We investigated the recall of Mark Schoel, when Commissioner Schoel, when it first came out that his Facebook or social media posts were xenophobic and contrary to what the majority of Clackamas County's citizens wanted. In fact, there was a large amount of effort to suggest that he resign, and this board, in fact, did ask him to resign, and he failed to do so. So the recall process is certainly your right. It is hideously expensive and hideously difficult, but that is premature because there is nothing to recall Commissioner Fireside about. At some point in the future, who knows what's going to happen? We will cross that bridge when we get to it. Any discussion now is premature. Thank you for your time, and good luck.
Thank you.
The next hand that I see is Dave Quadlauter. Dave Quadlauter, I'll allow you to speak, and you'll have three minutes.
Good morning. My name is David Quadlauter, resident of Clackamas County and the City of Milwaukee. I appreciate your time, as I know you have many pressing projects to tackle. One such project that is deeply meaningful to me and many others is the completion of Milwaukee Bay Park. As you may know from last year's NCPRD Systems Plan Survey, Milwaukee Bay Park, even in its unfinished state, is already the most visited outdoor park in the district. Unfortunately, progress on Phase 3 of the park has been stalled for years, leaving much of this vision unrealized. Notably, the absence of bathrooms, shade trees, and play areas have diminished the usability of this park for many residents, including families with young children. In response to these delays, I, along with fellow community members, organized a rally last September to express our collective desire to see this project move forward. You may have seen it on the news as it was covered by several local news stations. Dozens of residents of all ages from both the City of Milwaukee and unincorporated Clackamas County met at Milwaukee Bay Park and held up signs urging the city and county to work together to finish the park. The rally underscored the community's commitment to transforming the park into the promised asset, especially given the urgency of utilizing the $2.4 million in grants that could expire soon if the project isn't completed. I understand from recent communications between the City of Milwaukee and NCPRD that there are disagreements and misunderstandings that have created barriers to moving forward. However, I am encouraged by the city's willingness to return to the table and renegotiate a park-specific agreement that clarifies responsibilities and paves the way for completion, even as other legal matters stretch on. As a resident, I respectfully urge this board to seize this opportunity, to come to the table and engage in good-faith discussions with the City of Milwaukee. I believe your leadership can help rebuild trust between the parties and ensure that the significant investment already made by both agencies and the enthusiasm of our community are not wasted. Collaboration, compromise, and a shared focus on the common good will be essential in unblocking this stalemate and making Milwaukee Bay Park a reality. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
The next hand that I see is Les Poole. Les Poole, and I'll allow you to speak, and you'll have three minutes.
Good morning. Am I coming through?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. Welcome, Chair Roberts. Sometimes you think, why did I get into this? And certainly, I'm referring to this situation that is clouding the start of your term. In no way is this a reflection of the chair or any other commissioners, and discussions about Tootie Smith or previous election involving our new chair are a diversion. I have a simple request to make regarding how we proceed, and I use the word "we" because unfortunately, the situation is county business. And unfortunately, there's a lot of angst out there that can't be talked away or wished away. And I'm hopeful that we have a dialogue that doesn't suck up county resources or expect too much from the commissioners, because there is a legal process here. If charges are filed, I want to just hereby make a very simple request, and that is, if and when charges are filed, it would be impossible for Ms. Fireside to continue. And if charges are filed, I would ask her to resign immediately afterwards. I'm very concerned about how she's conducted herself from the time this started in October right on through to today. I understand she's in a difficult situation. She hasn't been charged, but my goodness, the silence, the shutting down of her, of her media presence, the lack of her attendance today, that's an indication of someone who is not, not up to this job in a way, because this job sometimes brings some really big crises, and I don't think she's ready for it. I really don't see how she'll be able to continue. I'm going to conclude with a couple of other things. One is, I think back to the irony of this because four years ago, some of the folks that called in today were all over demanding that Commissioner Schoel resign and screaming about how a recall was going to be the answer. And here we are with this, and not a word from them today. I, I don't want to take up any more time. Please, folks, let's all be ready for the conclusion of this investigation. And when it hits, we're all going to have something to say. Thank you.
I see currently no other hands raised to speak. If you are attending this meeting virtually and would like to speak, regardless of whether you've pre-registered to speak or not, now is your final opportunity to please raise your hand, and I will call on you in the order that I see. Mr. Chair, that concludes my list.
Thank you. I'll turn to my colleagues. Did they have any input at this time? Commissioner West?
Couple comments. I guess I'll turn to counsel regarding the union negotiations. We, by law, can't say anything. It is my opinion that there is a lot more to that story. And I am empathetic to your family's and others' condition while we're hearing that. But there's a lot more. But I would recommend that you go back and listen to the public meeting just before we went to break. There are public meetings where staff came and presented. I would recommend that people listen to that, whoever wants to. And then, I didn't know if, Jane, if you have anything to add to that concern from the testimony we heard today?
Commissioners, the only thing I would add is that both the union and the county are working very hard to resolve the open contract. There is a mediation next week, and we're optimistic that these issues can be resolved.
Thank you. Giovanni?
Yes. I want to just, first and foremost, absolutely thank you for the hard work that your organization does, and it's vital to the success of our county. This is a top policy priority for Clackamas County, and you're one of the bright shining examples of why we've been so successful comparatively to all the other counties. If you listen to even Washington County, you listen to the City of Portland, Multnomah, Metro, as they go around and testify from city to city right now about the SHS issue, I mean, they can't, they're not more proud of, I mean, we are the example. We are outperforming everybody by a mile, and you're a credit to that. I share your concerns. Right now, Metro has the unilateral authority to just cut the tax if they want to. This board currently, as its makeup has not made a, has not really spoke about it, but the previous board was very clear that we did not support Metro's current proposal to cut this tax. We were concerned that people that you serve will end up back on the streets and that we would see a regression in the progression, in the progress we've made. I would love to talk more with you about this, but like, the urgency in your voice, I share with you and partner with you 110%. We could not be, there's no daylight between us. And so we are fighting to keep your programming intact. I promise you that. And that is front and foremost. We are working on it. We just issued a letter to challenge Metro's cut to the tax and the changing of the SHS services. We came, went out Tuesday. Lake Oswego and their, their meeting Tuesday night challenged Metro quite sternly about their lack of planning, their lack of foresight, how they feel like that this is a wrong-headed move, and their great partnership with Clackamas County in these issues. The cities and the counties are trying to galvanize to push back against some of these significant changes. Our goal is to get the job done and get people the help and care they need, and we're committed to that. So I just, I really wanted to address that because I am in alignment, I'm fully in alignment with you. Thank you for staying. If you had something else to go to, I appreciate it. I, and I'll, and then I'll kind of close with my comments around this. I really love this county. It's been, it's a great home for my family and a great place to raise my child. And there's people from all walks of life, from all different stripes, and sometimes we don't always agree, but, but I have, find great community here. And I think it's our job as public stewards to build trust and to protect the interests of the county and to make sure the business goes forward. I'm not going to make a lot more comments. You can, people know where I stand regarding my colleagues' legal issues. I'm not going to have a lot more to say about that. I think it's been clear where I stand. But I'm very empathetic to the voters that were brave enough to take time out of their day to share uncomfortable informations and sometimes opinions that aren't easy to hear. And we work, everybody who testified today who lives in this county, we work for you. I say that all the time, whether we are always in agreement or not in agreement. And we do have a cloud hanging over us. There is a lack of trust. That's what I'm taking away today. We have a lot of work as a board to build that back up. We want to continue to do the exceptional work we've done over the last few years. And I think it's important that we're present. And even if it's not always comfortable, I think that people that have been rightfully concerned about the news that they received have been, they have been respectful and courteous, and they have shared their regresses to their government in a way that is impactful and that we should listen to and take what we can from it. I believe that you can do that in this, and have that discourse and, and still move forward. My goal is to move the county forward, and as things progress, then the board will have to make decisions along those, along those lines. We, we, we don't, we have to just kind of also see what develops. If Commissioner Fireside is not charged and she goes through her due process, then I respect that process, and I will move forward and work with her accordingly, the best I can. That's my job as, as your county commissioners, to work with this entire board and to be cohesive. If it goes a different way, then the board will have to make a different decision as we see that happen. We are acutely aware of what's going on, and I think we're watching. And, but my, my, my commitment to this constituents is that I'll continue to work for you and to protect the interests of the county first and safeguard the county. And that's all I have, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Commissioner Schrader?
I just want to say, well said, my friend. You're a good commissioner. I enjoy working with you. We have forged a friendship, as I have with Commissioner Savas, oh, Commissioner Savas, as well as Chair Roberts and I have worked together for many years. He was first sheriff when I was first a commissioner. And I will let people know, I remain, I remain close friends with Commissioner Smith. We forged, despite our different sides of the aisle, we forged a very strong friendship, and I look forward to seeing her in the near future as someone who I saw as a strong leader, who did have integrity, and was just, quite frankly, I'll be honest, Greg, you, I feel the same way about you, but she was really fun to work with. So you got a big shoes to fill with that one, because I did enjoy her. And Gary, I do have one question for you. With, with the issue that we're dealing with, with the projects we've been doing, isn't this the program that won the national award for the National Association of Counties for the outreach work they were doing with getting people off the street? I believe it was.
Yes, our, our CHA program coordinated access to housing program. But yes, we received a national award for that program.
So one of the things I want to communicate to folks today, that award for our county was a huge deal because it's become a model now, not just for this county, but for everybody across the United States. They're looking at it to replicate it. We're working at it at a national level. That is amazing that your county, Clackamas County, Oregon, innovates to the level where we can actually influence not just what we're doing locally, but also across the United States. And finally, let me leave you with my, I didn't mean to take so long. My philosophy has always been not left, not right, but forward. I make friendships with people of whoever they are because I enjoy working with them. I enjoy learning different perspectives from people. I really loved what Ben has brought to the table with his recovery system of care that is going to be innovative for the rest of this county. Commissioner Savas has been the guru of transportation. And Commissioner Chair Roberts, I look forward to working with you to continue the not left, but not right, but forward impetus of this county. And I have to say that I think that we can do it. And I appreciate all of your friendship and your support, and I look forward to 2025. And I look forward to continued conversations about these difficult issues so we can come to some kind of a consensus. Thank you.
Thank you, Martha. Commissioner Savas?
Yeah, I'm going to split my comments. My comments right now are basically about public comment portion and the history, and then I'll talk about some of the other topics under Commissioner Comments. So with regard to public comment, history, in 2010, when I was elected, sworn in in January, there was no public comment, period, period, zero. And I advocated for, we got public comment. And the discussion came up in my history, going back even 10, 12 years before then, over 25 years, about public comment and how different organizations do it, whether it's before the meeting or after the meeting. So that said, we have this thing here, I know someone referenced spirit, but our ground rules, how we act, and I think it's been, it's been my, I believe the board's ideals, is that when people speak under public comment, if there's a misstatement or correction, we can address it right then and there. It's ideal. I, you know, I'm willing and open to different methods of dealing with it. And I, certainly if the room is packed with 100 people, and, you know, we're going to have a lot of public comment, then time is going to be factored in, and that's the discretion of the chair to manage the meeting and such. So I don't, don't want to interfere, but I just wanted to say that, you know, there's different practices by different means. But sometimes, I think one rule that sticks out to me, and it's a very painful one, it's a very personal one, that happens all the time, is that misinformation gets spread, and the faster you, quicker you can address some misinformation, do it respectfully, the better off we all are. So the very bottom of this, and I think you all have a copy of it, it says, correct misinformation, and also treat people with respect and the public and so forth. So one piece of misinformation is that the timing of public comment, as long as I can remember, well past, well prior to Chair Smith, was public comment was held after our consent agenda. That's typical, not before the meeting. I, well, I do want to say publicly, so there was no change. Chair Smith didn't change that particular aspect. But I will say that I've always been an advocate for public comment upfront. So I, I, you know, that's something we can always discuss. I know if we have a retreat, we can talk about some of these details. But I will say, for example, that we've always done it this way. I mean, well, not always, but in my history, we've been done it that way. I would advocate for others. And Metro, for example, allows you to testify in advance prior to their work session. So that's something we, we can discuss. I, I will say, you know, I think today, this morning, is a great example of the array of concerns and issues before us. And, you know, I think this is a lot for our new commissioners, Chair Roberts and Commissioner Fireside, to just, you got a taste of a little bit of the number of issues that are out there for us to tackle. So this is a small demonstration of that here today. And I'm hoping that we can prioritize our time with all these issues to figure out what we tackle first. we tackle first. But I do want to tell the public that's here today and who have left, that's also one of the other things I want to say, is that if we can address it quick, when we're educating people and telling them the facts, some people have already left because they have busy schedules, I get that, but if there's an opportunity to correct during public comment and do it respectfully, that misinformation that was heard may have carried out to the people who've already left, and they're going to go home with that in their head. So the sooner I think we address anything we can. Now, I don't think we should address every comment. I don't believe in that, but if there's something that is, you know, pertinent or valued, we can get in front of it right away. So I will, I will just say that, I'll end my comments there and then hold off, and I'll speak under Commissioner Comments on the remainder of all the issues. But I do want to thank everyone for being here today and raising all these issues. It's important, but, you know, I just, let's not forget that, that's why I mentioned priorities, there's a lot of people in crisis today around the county. There's a lot of very, very hot issues, and we can't do everything immediately. We need to take our time and be very thoughtful about how we tackle these, the challenges of the county on behalf of the citizens of this county. And Chair, I yield back.
Thank you, Commissioner Savas. And Gary, did you have any comment to that public comment?
Yes, Chair, thank you. So first, I advise Chair Smith, I'm sorry, forgive me, I advise Chair Roberts today to let the public speak first, and then the board would comment after that. So that was my recommendation, which he followed. So if you disagree, that's on me, not on the Chair. Apologize, Chair. Yes, to comment about the swearing in, I'd like to comment. So by Oregon law, county commissioners, after an election, take office the first Monday in January and are required to be officially sworn in prior to their first day in office. So Chair Roberts, Commissioner Schrader, and Commissioner Fireside each were formally sworn in at a private ceremony prior to January 6th. That is state law. So there were no secret swearing ins. This was all done by Oregon state law. I wanted to state that. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. And first and foremost, I want to thank everybody for coming. And really, this is our job, to sit here and listen and to take your input. And we have staff taking notes, keeping track of these issues, many of which will come up in our conversations, you know, and we'll have discussions about how we can move forward on some of these things. Some of them we'll come together on, and some of them we might be divided. But I do want to kind of say, follow up, you know, on Commissioner West, you know, I hope I say it right, Giovanni. We are very committed to stepping up in every way we can to address the issues, just as you mentioned. And I will give credit to Ben West. He has been working diligently. We've had lots of meetings. He's getting me up to speed, and we are going 110 miles an hour, trying to make sure we're on the front lines to supporting those critical needs, and it is very important to us. And I also, I mean, there's so many people here I'd like to comment on, but I want you to know I heard what you had to say and have discussions about that. I did want to comment on Natalie. And I want you to know, I know the sentiments of the board as well, is we care about county employees. And I appreciate you coming today. I want you to know, we're all committed to finding resolution. That's what this is all about. And just want to know that we value all our county employees, and they work hard and they're on the front lines. One time I was on the front line, so I can still appreciate the hard work that frontline workers do. So in response to kind of your public comment, again, I just want to say thank you, everybody. I know it's, you spend a lot of time coming here. It's important for us to hear from you, and I want to thank you very much. So at this point, I'll now close the public communication portion of this meeting and I'll move on. So Gary, could you go on, what's next for us?
Thank you, Chair Roberts. Next is county administrator update. During this update, I want to inform you of documents I signed on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners during the board's recess from December 19, 2024 through January 6, 2025. It's shown here on the screen. Per Clackamas County Code, Appendix C, C-050-0100, Section 5, the county administrator may sign contracts of any amount on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners when the board is on recess for at least two consecutive weeks. During that time, I signed four contracts on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners. There's no ratification or approval needed. I signed them on your behalf per the code, so it's done. But to be transparent, this has been posted online, this document, as well as all the contracts. I emailed you earlier this week, and now I will formally read them for the record. What I signed were, for item one, human resources, approval of an amendment to a contract with canopy well-being for employee assistance program services. Amendment value is $360,000 for three years. Total agreement value is $779,970 for seven years. Funding is through fees paid for by county departments, county employee retirees, and COBRA beneficiaries. This does include a small portion of budgeted county general funds. Item two, for human resources, approval of the 2024-2026 labor agreement with AFSMI Clackamas County Communication Center, or CCOM, for represented employees. Total contract value, including benefits, is $2,125,569 for two years. Funding is through Oregon Emergency Communication Tax Funds and dispatch agency user fees, which does include approximately $492,883 of county general funds. Item three, human resources, approval of the 2024-2028 labor agreement with AFSMI Water Environment Services for represented employees. Total contract value, including benefits, is $8,819,635 for four years. Funding is through ratepayer fees, sewer charges, surface water charges, and system development charges. No county general funds are involved. Item four, human resources, approval of the 2024-2028 labor agreement with AFSMI Department of Transportation and Development for represented employees. Total contract value, including benefits, is $24,356,353 for four years. Funding is through state and federal funds, fees and fines, and approximately $824,242 of county general funds. The Board of County Commissioners explicitly authorized me, the county administrator, to sign the collective bargaining contracts, items two, three, and four, that I just read on December 17, 2024. Again, I signed these four contracts on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners. It is done and completed. No vote needed by you. This will all be documented. It's online and will be filed away. Do you have any questions, commissioners, though, on any of these contracts I signed?
Seeing none, I think Gary, proceed then.
Very good. Thank you. Normally, I share great things our county employees do during my administrator update. Because of the time, I'll pass on that today, but I'll have plenty of examples to share with you at future meetings. That is my report today. Back to you, Chair Roberts.
Great. Thank you, Gary. Well, now's the time for Commissioner Communication. And Martha, I've just kind of decided, we are going to start with the senior commissioner. I feel you've been here a while. I want to let you go first, if that's okay.
Yeah, and it's been, it's been a great, I love this county, and I'm privileged to work with people that love the county as much as I do. There isn't a place in this county I haven't been. And I just want to, I just want to say one thing about another colleague who is not here with us today, and that is Commissioner Schall. He had a very rough start when he first came here, and I'm asking people to remember that and remember, we're in a situation now where we have another commissioner that appears there's going to be a rough start. So please let us work through this. I do want to say, since I mentioned to you who's become a good friend, I also want to mention that Commissioner Schall, I found him to be diligent. I found him to be intelligent and logical. Obviously, we did not agree on certain things, but we would sit together and talk about it. And I learned a lot about him, and this is what I'm going to just remind people as we go into 2025. Don't judge people. Try and understand their stories and their narratives. What makes them who they are, and what is informing their decisions, and why they do what they do. One of the things, I hope Commissioner Schall, my past colleague, won't be upset if I mention this, but he told me a story once, you know, he was in Iraq. He saw a lot of carnage. He probably saw people get blown up in front of him. I reminded people of that, and he told me once he was out with a young guy, and they were going out on a mission, and he was very, very young. He was about under 20, maybe 21. And he said, he started to talk to him. He started to say, oh, you know, what are you interested in? What are you doing? And he said, halfway out through the mission, he just thought, I'm turning back. He did not want to expose that young man at this point in time to the, you know, the fact that he could potentially be killed. And I thought that was very honorable of him. And so it gave me insight into who he was, despite other issues we may or may not agree on or other comments that were made. So I'm going to ask that we use that same. And he also gave me one of the best compliments I've ever had. Kind of tongue-in-cheek, however. He goes, Martha, I don't know how you do it, but you just seem to survive by grace. Because I have to tell you, he was military, I'm not. I know I drove him crazy on many occasions, quite frankly. But I'm going to ask all of us, with the current situation we're dealing with, can we please handle it the same way that we handled it with difficulties? This is not an easy job, people. It's hard. We have to sit. We have to listen. We have to make decisions. And let's give everybody the grace to give them the benefit of the doubt until we know the real narratives and the real stories and what informs who they are and why they do what they do. So that's my wish and ask for 2025. And thank you, Gary. You have been one of the best administrators I've ever had the privilege to work with. So thank you.
And thank you, Martha. You're going to go to our next veteran, Commissioner Savas?
Yep. Thank you, Chair. Appreciate everyone being here today in the public comment. And starting off a new year, Ben, it's like this, it's like restarting the rodeo of the next four years or two-year cycle. Every couple of years, there's a change on the board, not always, but an election, and then every four years, there's a change of the chair, the leadership. And so again, I appreciate and honored that my colleagues support my new role as vice chair, though it'll be, won't be that much work, but I appreciate that. I want to just talk about, you know, as we start off a new year, and just share some experiences, and I know what it's like to be newly elected to a new position. And so some of you may know, but I was previously elected on districts starting back in the year 2000. So when I got elected to the Clackamas County Commission, I had a lot of background already, already involved in the county, a lot of county stuff. But with all that said, what happens when you run for election, especially after you get elected, you have a lot of people that reach out to you and want to share or concern, lobby you, you know, help influence or educate you and bring their issues forward. And Chair Roberts said it many times, and I agree, and even public comments about listening. And it really is, you know, it sounds simple, but there really isn't art to it, so to speak. It's something, as you develop it and you're in a meeting, you listen, you know, you actually, I think, enhance that skill set of how to listen and try to understand what those are. And I remember in my private practice, in my business, people came to me, usually very upset. They weren't upset at me, usually, they were not upset at me. They were usually upset about their situation and some work that had been done or not done, or the challenges they had trying to solve a problem. And I learned then, way back then, that if I could just put myself in their shoes for a moment, I could better understand maybe where they're coming from. And I'm sure that as a deputy or in law enforcement, or even our firefighters, our emergency responders, have to arrive on the scene, perhaps could be the worst day of their lives, could be a crisis that they ever experienced before, but, you know, it is somewhat crisis management and, you know, trying to get, keep a grip of things. So what I'm really saying here today about on the information side is all this stuff coming at us, we, and I said it earlier, is trying to prioritize, run a list of all the things that are important to each of us. I have a list of things I want to share with both Chair Roberts and Commissioner Fireside. And Ben, you were the most recent newbie, so to speak, you know, two years, and, you know, I took you for a drive or two and showed you a few things bit by bit, and, you know, you're still going to learn, year by year. And I'm still learning, right? It takes a long time. Four years sometimes isn't enough, believe it or not, to really kind of understand all the issues, so. But I do want to say, part of the problem, when the challenge really is, trying to discern when someone comes to you with a problem, they have a set or a portion of the information about a topic. They don't have the whole story. And it's not that it's necessarily a truth or a half-truth, you know, what they're saying, you know, what they believe is a truth to them, so, you know, you got to trust that. But understanding the whole context of it takes a long time, and there's some of these situations that were raised here today, not many, that are really gnarly and complex and have a lot of history to them. So again, I think having the patience and the mindset, how we tackle these, and actually ask the public to understand that we need to prioritize the hottest issues before us today, as our new commissioners are getting on board and we're learning not only the issues, but learning how to work with one another. So, you know, I've always approached the listening and hearing things as, you know, if people take the time to be here today, or call on the phone, or send us an email, it's important to them. It's flat out important to them. So we have to be mindful that this is not something we just dismiss, and to be respectful, another misunderstanding happens sometimes. Well, I went up and I spoke to the county commissioners, and they didn't say, they didn't say one word to me. They didn't respond to my questions whatsoever or my concerns. And I go, you know, and I tell them, I go, well, we've got, we're trying to be respectful. If we take on and challenge and dig into that, we're not going to have time to do the work of the commission. But, you know, if there's something really important, you know, we always ask our staff to follow up, or we'll follow up with you, or get your business card, like Javon, who gave us her business card. So, you know, there is, we do a lot of work, and after the business meeting, often, you know, I'm asking our staff to, hey, help me out with this. I learned this, we learned that. Gary, you've done a great job managing staff and making sure that all the commissioners' questions get answered. So sometimes that takes a lot of work. That doesn't happen necessarily the same day or the same week. You know, sometimes it takes a while to dig up all the history and make sure that we can see the complete picture, as much of the information as we have at hand, and then make a decision. It is unfortunate that, I will say this, unfortunate, whether it's county commissions, city councils, special districts, and especially the state legislature, because they make laws. And, you know, we have a session coming up, and we have a lot of new lawmakers, and some of them are, you know, no one knows everything on day one. So this is not a criticism, but it takes a long time to learn it, yet we're to make laws in the next six months. And that's unnerving sometimes, because how do I get, you know, if there's a particular state legislator has a bill, and you've got a very, a huge concern about it, and you really strongly feel that they don't have some key information, we're going to try to educate and inform and lobby that. And I know we have our staff to help us do that, you know, during the state legislative session. But I really think our world and how we treat each other and how we make decisions is information, what we have and what we know. And the challenge is really trying to ascertain what is, what it is we don't know, right, on both sides. So I trust people's intent when they come in here and they send us communication or speak, but I also feel responsibility that we need to, best we can, to be informational. And I think part of our job is to inform the public as best we can. It's never perfect. We never get 100% there, never will, because of all the challenging and all the information that's out there. But sorry for my long-winded response, but those are my comments as we kick off this new year. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner West?
Thank you, Chair. I'm going to try to have a really quick, just heartfelt, honest conversation with my colleague who's not here. I also, Gary, you are correct, she has, Martha had a private, I'm just going to go over, get my swearing in done type of thing with the clerk. Commissioner Fireside did choose to do it privately. That's completely legitimate. You can do that. You don't have to have a large event like Chair Roberts, he had a large event that we attended. I will say this, though, is that perception in the business that we do here in the county matters, and often it's reality. And a big part of this job is showing up. I remember, I have, it's been a lifelong lesson for me, just learning how to even just show up and be present. And we work for the public, and that's our job. And I think that there is a perception with maybe some of us on the board and with the public, that despite it being tough and uncomfortable, you still have to come to work at Clackamas County. have to come to work at Clackamas County as a commissioner. And so I, you know, this is why there is this perception, is that the email, or the Facebook and the website turned off. No responses to them, to the many, many people over the many weeks that have come and testified with their legitimate concerns about how this happened, and how did it go down, and who knew what, and when did they know it, and why was all this information that was already known during the election cycle reported only just after the election was done? All fair questions. We have a trust problem here. And so, it's, you know, and then the swearing in, not with the public. Chair Roberts, she was the only commissioner, not at your swearing in, everybody else was there. And then, not here today in person. And so I would just, as a colleague, it would be so helpful if we would know what to expect. What, where, how is this going to impact the Board of County Commissioners in the next few weeks or months? How? And an answer to that would be wonderful, or even just having enough respect to the board and to the citizens here, to sit here and participate with us, because we are all required to do this together. And as a colleague, I would encourage you to please come into the office, and please come sit with us. You are welcome to sit on this dais, you are duly elected by the voters of Clackamas County, regardless of the controversy. Until that change, Ms. Fireside, I would please ask you to come sit on the dais with us, and please participate in the business that we're doing. With that said, I want to jump over and talk about something we probably all glued to the TV watching the last couple, the near future. Southern California is in crisis. I couldn't get away from the imagery that looked like a scene of apocable, like, it was almost apocalyptic. We have 400 Oregon firefighters approximately that are going down to help. It's exasperating the fact that there's not water to fight the forest fires, and that there is a lack of access to the water to get that done, and that we're seeing 100,000, at least, I don't know if it's still, as of last night, 100,000 residents were under mandatory evacuation. The Wildland fires are just, there's three large ones. And many people from all walks of life, across the entire socioeconomic status and lifespan, are being displaced, and some being told to run to the ocean, get out of your car and run, and bulldozers are being seen moving their stranded cars to the side of the road. I've never seen anything like that. They have imagery of a plane flying over LA, and you can just see, like, a third of the image is just all ablaze. And it's just really, really concerning. And so I want to wish and keep our firefighters and all the first-hand responders, and I wish I could say more than thoughts and prayers, but that's what I got right now. But go with God's speed, and let's try to get as many help, as much help as possible to as many people as possible, and try to mitigate this as quick as possible. And if there are barriers or infrastructure issues that are prohibiting the most effective responses possible, then let's figure out how to get around that. But it's really concerning, and I just didn't feel like, after what we all had witnessed on our neighbors to the south, that we didn't say something, acknowledging that. A lot of news that, you know, that impacts all of us as Americans. We had a, President Jimmy Carter has been laying in wait. Today is his funeral. He was elected in 1976. I want to thank him for his humanitarian work, which is legendary, and his commitment to his faith. And I want to send my sympathies to his wife, Rosalind, and to their family as an American. And this is, impacts all of us as Americans. He was one of our presidents, and so I want to respect that and acknowledge that today's his funeral. And let us, if you have a chance, maybe take a moment to learn a little bit more about what he has done, his, his work as president, and all the other things he did as a public servant. And I don't, and then with that, I will give up the floor. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner West. Commissioner Fireside?
Yes, I just want to say thank you so much to the workforce for really helping me get my feet under me this week. And I'm very much looking forward to the work that we have ahead. And I, I just thank you for the opportunity to get up to speed, and I look forward to moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Well, first and foremost, and most importantly to me, is really thanking everybody for coming today and expressing their concerns. And I hope I can encourage other people to come in the future, because we really do want to hear from you. I think regarding some of the issues regarding one of our colleagues, that's kind of been a topic. I think, I just ask people to think about this for a second of, you know, I know, remember who knew what, when and where. But I would kind of encourage you to think about this for a second. It's important for all of us to remember that the agencies in these matters have the factual information and knowledge. And they also have the authority to release details in the matter. And those are the city, county, and state. That isn't this Board of County Commissioners, and the state law enforcement, that they have the information. And so with that being said, I just want to encourage people to please have some patience, allow the system to run its course. And at some point in time, we will hear from one of the, or all of those agencies, really, about what, what the next step is. So I can just tell you, as, you know, a former homicide detective, working all kinds of cases across the board, that you have to look at these things with an open mind. And I know that's difficult, but I would just encourage us to let the system play out. And that, I know it isn't easy. So I want to shift gears now, really with respect to my role. And I just want to tell you, I'm incredibly excited. We have, all of us have a number of critical issues and matters ahead of us. And my priority is to work with our fellow commissioners, to build that cohesive, productive, and high-performing commission to deliver the county's goals and priorities. And it's, it's people in this county, and the employees, that depend on us, on moving forward, on these priorities, with really a sense of urgency. So I want you to know, you know, I've been meeting with a number of staff, my fellow colleagues have been very kind to me, of helping get me up to speed on issues. And also importantly is, the amazing staff, the county administration has really stepped up in a number of ways to really help me. The, so I'm very excited. I'm confident we're going to move forward. I'm confident we're going to come together as a team. I was, I was always in sports growing up. I believe in, you know, we all have to come together, and that's for the benefit of everybody as a whole. I did want to follow up on one thing that Ben said, and that has to do with what's going on in California. And that I, as many of you, have seen this horrific disaster happening. I can tell you, when I was here, when we had the fires in 2020, it was overwhelming for me. And I could tell you, people from California were here. So I would maybe ask staff that perhaps emergency management could reach out to their incident command. Maybe there is something we can do to support them in some way as a county, because I will guarantee you, they were on the lines here. And when I saw that, that was the first thing that I really remembered. It's like, wow, there were a lot of California people here helping us. So if there's anything we might be able to do, it might, something, it would be nice as a county to be able to do that. So with that, I also have my colleague, Senior Commissioner. Our light's going off here, so Commissioner Schrader, go ahead.
We got to get going here. We can be talking all day. We're so boring. In particular. I just want to say, I've been thinking about our colleagues in Los Angeles, and I was going to suggest that we write a letter to them, to our supervisors that are dealing with this right now. And, and hopefully, when our firefighters come back, I think we ought to have a little something for them here, and thanking them not only what they did when we were facing one another, but just recognizing, because I believe Lake Oswego, Clackamas, I think, fire, I think all of them have gone down there to help with the conflagration. So let's talk about that, and maybe get a letter out, and let people know we care. So, thank you.
Well, thank you. I think at this point, this will conclude our meeting. Hearing nothing further, meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming again.